Okay, I am Mayor Beverly H. Burke and this is the March Clarkston. I need for everyone to mute their phone unless they're speaking. And we'll make sure in terms of starting this meeting, it's called to order, I'll do roll call. Vice Mary Yasu. Councilman Carol. Joining you, Councilwoman Johnson.
Present.
Councilwoman Hopkins.
Present.
Councilwoman Bell.
Present.
Councilwoman Hood.
Present.
Okay, and at this time, we will adopt the agenda. With the adoption of the agenda, we need to make sure to make a change where we have under executives, under executive session, we need to have to discuss a personnel matter versus a legal matter. Also, at that, at the same time, we can adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda. We can do it separate or we can do it as one activity. So it's up to you in terms of how you want to make that motion. So I'll entertain a motion from the council.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I have a one-part motion. I have a motion to approve the agenda for the executive session to discuss a personnel matter.
Okay, so let me step it back. You want to adopt the agenda with the correction of the executive session for saying personnel matters, to discuss personnel matters?
Okay, that's correct. I would like to adopt the agenda. To add the, I moved to adopt the agenda with the correction of having an executive session to a, for a personnel matter.
To, okay, to discuss personnel matters?
To discuss a personnel matter.
All right, is there a second?
A second?
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt the agenda with the correction under the executive session to discuss a personnel matter. Is there any discussion? Are you ready for questions? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion pass. And then we'll, we'll adopt the consent agenda at that, at that, at that time. The next order of business is to do roll call and we do the pledge of allegiance. So we'll go ahead and we'll do the pledge of allegiance at this time. So, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll move on to administrative business which, and presentation, which is the approval of the following minutes. The 20122 city council meeting and the 2222 work session meeting. Yes, Vice Mary Yasu, yes.
I just want to advise the council that the minutes for the city council meeting of February 1st was not included on the agenda, so I, I don't think we can, I mean, adapt it without even looking at it. So I just wanted to.
So what we can, what we can do is make sure we just adopt the minutes for the work session. And then for the next meeting, we'll go back and adopt that one for 0 February. Thank you.
So I'll entertain.
Okay.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from the work session of the 22nd February.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the minutes from the February 22nd work session? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion pass. We'll move on to reports and we'll have the planning, economic and development report followed by the city manager report from Ms. Cowie.
Wait, Madam Mayor, before we move to reports, were we supposed to adopt the consent agenda? You said there were two.
We can do that later. We can do that down. Yeah, thank you though. Ms. City Manager Cowie?
I am ready, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Yes, we have a full house tonight. We're really excited. We have 26 participants. I saw you looking for me, Madam Mayor. The March 11th council retreat is scheduled and it's, it will be from 9:00 AM to 4:30 PM. It will be a virtual retreat. Thank you for all who participated and gave me your feedback. That means that all hands on deck and roll your sleeves up and be ready to work. Work is moving progressively for the.
Yeah, I need it.
Can you hear me? For the roadwork on the Norman Road and Market Street project. I know that some have seen that project and are concerned about the, the project moving progressively. So we're excited about that project. So Planning and Economic Development Department, the Planning and Zoning Board will have a meeting scheduled for March the 15th to hear a conditional use permit request for a place of assembly. The address is 4320 East Poncelion Avenue and the final vote will happen at the April 5th city council meeting. Madam Mayor, the substation work from Georgia Power, the substation is actually located next to City Hall Annex. That's at 10055 Roland Street. That is the substation work with Georgia Power in the city. Currently, they're finalizing the plans for their landscaping. They are moving trees currently that are listed on their property. And they do plan on replacing it, replacing those trees. And the final plan will be presented to city council for review. And that is the ongoing project currently. The reflectors are currently here for the city, for that bus pullout location that's on the corner of Market and East Poncelion. We know that some were going, it was, it seemed like the lanes were splitting into two lanes into one, but the reflectors are there and they will be installed. We don't want any more vehicle accidents at that location. So the reflectors are here. There was a delay in receiving the equipment, so now they're here and they will be in place. And the city has received a construction agreement for the paperwork for the electric vehi, the electric vehicle charging station. The equipment has been ordered. Installation is set to begin in, in April. And the change order replacement for our decorative fence near 4036 East Poncelion has been damaged once again, Madam Mayor. So we are in the process of replacing that, that portion of fence. And that includes both of my reports for tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time? Yes, Councilwoman Hopkins?
My question is for the city manager about the, the fence. We keep referring to that as a decorative fence and I'm wondering if it's required in any way by the railroad? Or if we just opted to put that up? Because it was decorative?
Decorative. It probably was. I don't know if that was a part of the initial contract to actually place that. It does look very nice for the city to have that. And it is around our Bucket Park locations and down where CSX. We can ask Mr. Kaiser or I'll follow up with you, Councilwoman Hopkins, and get that to differentiate between decorative and necessary.
I can, I can respond to that, Ms. White, if you'd like me to.
Well, you're here now, Mr. Kaiser.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes, ma'am. We call it a decorative fence, but it's really a safety fence, part of the Streetskate project. Thirty-five hundred linear feet included in that project so that we would be able to minimize the amount of pedestrian crossover of CSX Railroad. There was a lot for many, many years of pedestrian crossing wherever they wanted to cross at the railroad. And we, we felt during the Streetskate project that a, a fence, a safety fence, and of course, it's decorative looking because a chain link would look more industrial looking, but it's really a safety fence so that we would force pedestrians to cross over at railroad crossings as opposed to mid-block. So it really is a necessity for that project.
It, it was optional though, I guess that was my question.
Yes, it was optional, correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You. No other questions? We'll move on to the city attorney's report. Mr. Quinn?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Don't really have anything to report this evening.
Okay, thank you. No questions for Mr. Quinn? Hearing none, we'll move on to council remarks and reports. Vice Mary Yasu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to report a couple of events that I attended. I will start with February 9th. At the invitation of the Somali-American community, I, at the Refuge Coffee, I had the pleasure of meeting with the first presidential, woman presidential candidate for Somalia and in this month, during, I think this is Women's Month, so I just want to, I feel it's appropriate to mention that. The second event is, I want to mention is the February 25th. This Mayor Burke could not attend. She, she asked me if I can fill in for her, so I had the pleasure of attending the DeKalb Municipal Association Policy Committee Meeting at Tucker City Hall. And I definitely am glad I attended. There are several laws being considered by, by our state legislation that we really need to watch. I think one of them wants to put limitation on our municipalities power in terms of land use and, yeah, and some other things that are trying to preempt us. So we definitely need to follow those. And that's all the two events I just want to mention. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Carol?
Nothing to report this evening.
Okay, Councilwoman Johnson?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to report that we had our February and I want to thank the council members as well as Vice Mary Yasu for coming out, helping. And it was a great success. And Councilwoman Hopkins as well. That's about all I have to report this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilwoman Hopkins? And you're on mute. I know you're saying some wonderful stuff, but you're on mute right now.
I was. It was brilliant and I can never remember it again, but I would just wanted to thank Councilwoman Johnson again for organizing that food drive. There's like a huge amount of work and volunteers to be coordinated and also to wish her a happy birthday. Because that's going on camera. I'm not saying how old, but happy birthday.
Thank you so much.
Okay, all right. And Councilwoman Bell?
Thank you. So, had a meeting on Friday with Martha Ravello from the United States Senator Warnock's Office to discuss infrastructure, overall needs in the city. We discussed a number of things, but definitely wanted to communicate the need for translation of materials and signage throughout the city. And they said they would be very supportive and grateful. I also had a meeting with Sammy from the Clarkson Community Center for those on the Clarkson Community Centers to better serve our community. And the staff, Amber and Eric are ready to work and engage with our community and ensure that information is in language as we provide updates with what the city next steps are as well, education about the city's initiatives. And then I attended the Housing First Georgia Coalition Meeting on last Friday where they talked about rapid response housing, wraparound services and support housing services, which are necessary to address homelessness and that there are two bills HB 713 as well as Senate Bill 535 that we should be on the lookout for that impose criminal bans and criminalized homelessness as a strategy to hire rather than house and house individuals. And then lastly, I had contact with a few students from Tucker Elementary who want to do a special project in Clarkston, so be on the lookout for updates with the hopes that we can get them to be a part of our Clarkston youth commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, thank you. This, last week, I attended the required training for newly elected municipal council members. It was excellent. I learned a lot. I look forward to taking more training through the Georgia Municipal Association. And just, we were over at the University of Georgia taking this train, a training. And in case you didn't remember, it was repeated to us several times throughout the three days that they won the national championship. So I just want everybody to remember that. It was, it was made very clear to everyone attended. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for continuing to let us know that here in Clarkston. We appreciate it.
Forget that.
Okay, we won't forget. Thank you. And so at this time, I'll do the mayor's report. I also had the pleasure of meeting the candidate who is running for president for Somali. I met her at the, at Refuge Coffee and I also spoke at a dinner that they had on the 12th. I attended the food drive. I also met with Senator Warnock's staff member and we talked and I gave her a tour of Clarkston, as I like to say, a taste of Clarkston. And we enjoyed that as well. And we talked about different measures that they can do. And I had the opportunity to meet with Senator Ossoff as well. And we talked about issues as it relates to Clarkston and making sure in terms of equity and making sure that he creates policies that are going to help within our community and literally making Clarkston a blueprint for when other places reach capacity that they can learn from what we've done in our community. I've had the opportunity to attend Representative Johnson's technology work panel that he had at Georgia, Georgia Piedmont Technical College. And I had the pleasure of being the mystery reader for Freedom Middle School as they celebrate National Read Across America Day tomorrow. So I'm excited about being able to do that. And I am so excited because next Tuesday is International Women's Day and we're going to host a panel with all but one of the female mayors of DeKalb County. And so I'm excited about that. And we're going to talk about strike against bias. So we're going to collaborate together to make sure we show that we are one DeKalb. So we'll see information about that. And I'm so excited to be able to partner with my organizations. I also participated in a climate change discussion in preparation for the State of the Union along with Mayor Garrett and some other community leaders so that we could talk about climate change and what we need to do and making sure that we pass, have the senate to pass that bill to make sure that we can proceed with climate change. So very excited, keeping, we're keeping, as you hear, all of the council members and mayor are busy trying to make sure we have a great city. So thank you all. With that, we'll move into public comments. And I got to get my glasses because I'm getting older. So, public comments. Any member of the public may address the council during this period allotted for a public comment. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments at the discretion of the presiding officer. The public comment period will be limited to 40 minutes and it is not a time for dialogue. If your public comment contains a series of questions, please submit those to the city clerk in writing. This will facilitate follow-up by the council or staff. The city council desires to allow an opportunity for public comment. However, the business of the city must proceed in an orderly, timely manner. With that being said, City Manager Cowie, did we have anyone signed up?
We had, we, we do have participants that would like to have public comment, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
We're going to start with Amy Metford.
Okay, let me start my time.
Hi, I wanted to say that I'm super excited to see the translation resolution come before Clarkston and getting things translated in language, especially the voting things from the commissioner's office. Really excited to see where that can go and hopefully get expanded throughout the city. And the city will sort of expand that to translation services for things all throughout the city. I'm also, was just kind of excited in December when council voted to support Fresh Harvest with funds for a food truck and was really excited to hear and see that that went through and was hoping to get an update on that from council or something that, you know, we could kind of see as a public where that was going, an event or something to kind of, I don't know, ring in the truck, something like that. So hoping we can see something like that coming down the line. I was also curious to know when we might get some follow-up on the park funds that the city voted. Hoping that maybe the city could do with some of the translation things that are coming. Some public outreach to get public input on what to do with the park or what kind of upgrades it needs. It needs a lot of things. So maybe getting the public involved to have a really cool park experience and something that the people can really use and benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cowie?
Mr. Metford?
Okay, Mr. Metford?
I'll start with a shout-out to the city and Larry Kaiser. I wanted to report, especially to Larry and Shawana, that the stormwater work on Roland Street was a resounding success. After the biblical rainstorm we had the other week, I did not, there was no flooding. The streets were drained quickly. All of these storm catch basins worked perfectly. So appreciate the city and Larry for getting creative with that and solving that and making it all work. Very exciting. Also wanted to encourage everybody to eat their way around Clarkston more often. We have adopted a, basically one night a week. We eat at a local restaurant. It's great because you can walk to it. So they're doing like a Taste of Tucker thing right now. And so I just want to encourage everybody to go grab something at Abyssinian, go grab something at Cat Man Do, try something different. Get you some Tibbs-a-Ways or something else. Also want to report that been enjoying the bike pads more and more. And it's great to see the progress happening on Roland, on both new projects through there. And then also I wanted to ask for an update on the city website, see how that was going. So just a mention of it, just where, what the crossover date would be, when that's going to be turned on. And then just also encourage everybody to work and continue encouraging people to do business in the city of Clarkston. We have a new business, well, with a business that relocated within the city across the street from my house. So I've been trying to do whatever I can to help them out and, you know, keep it, keep, keep them encouraged and keep encouraging your local parts and businesses. Thank you.
Okay, I have someone's hand raised from iPhone. I don't know exactly whose name is that. You're next. Your hand is up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cowie. Good evening, Madam Mayor and city of Clarkston council members and residents. And I'm, I'm here again for that, for we, our business is closing early hour because of the, the hour being cut off. And as I have said that several times during this committee meeting, I have been struggling to keep this business and we lost about 19 employees now. We're only down to four. And I'm getting two more employees. They tried to leave. They give me two weeks' notices. And right now to find the employee is very hard, especially in the city of Clarkston. And that's a family-owned business and me and my family live off this business too. And as well, the employee that worked with us before and just getting very, 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 very hard to keep our door open. We did everything we could do to bring a business as much as people, as much as a business we could do the time that we have allowed right now. But it's impossible. We couldn't even make half of what we used to do before. So I'm just encouraging again to look at these, the mayor and then the city council members. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jimmy, please could you make sure that you just give us your first and last name, please, for the record?
This is Tesfamaria Morgayo.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And Ms. Cowie, did we have, before, I see some raised hands, but I want to make sure, did we have anyone else signed up to speak?
Yes, there was a spot from, I hope I do not pronounce their names incorrectly. We have Idea Aisha Abid Ashakrat Hassan. So I don't know if you're going to go in that order altogether, but their hands are raised also. So we're going to go with Mr. Met first.
Hello. Hi, my name is Itel Hussain and I work as a teacher in Clarkston at Majid Al Mumanine. And I'd like to speak in favor of the resolution to expand language access on voting materials that are made available. Clarkston is fondly known as the Ellis Island of the South due to its diverse immigrant population. And this city is not just a safe space for us, but also a comfortable home. And I believe that language should not be the reason that we cannot have a say in the way that our home is run. So the languages that are proposed are Arabic, Burmese and Somali. And I was researching the demographics of Clarkston from the government website and it shows that over 65% of the city's population is Black and/or Asian. This shows that not only a large part of the population may possibly be locked out of civic participation, but I believe it also highlights an opportunity to fix this problem. There are more than enough of us to be hired to help with the translation of these materials, which will also bring jobs and bring our community closer in general. While this might seem like a large undertaking, it's also a problem that we already have the resources and the manpower to tackle and resolve ourselves. Thank you.
Hassan.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Asher Khan Hassan. I'm a digital community organizer with the Georgia Muslim Voter Project. And I'm here to express my support for Councilman Bell's resolution to provide additional language translation on all voter materials, ballots and signage. I think there's something so isolating about living in a land that does not speak the same language that you do. Your home is hundreds of miles away. You don't know your neighbors. Family are few and far between. You're alone in a strange land that speaks a strange tongue. The world that once seemed so unremarkable is a lot bigger and scarier. But the difference is that Clarkston isn't like that. I think that, you know, we're so close and so tight-knit and we have a lot of people that are very much speak the same language as we do in both communities and I'm a testament to that. My family and I immigrated to this, to this town in 2003 when I was just a baby. And they left behind their families, their friends, their businesses, their farms and their memories. And they wanted to chase that infamous American dream and hope that their young daughter would kind of one day make it all worth it. And as scary as the move was, once we landed, we were greeted with open arms. And that's something so unique about Clarkston and so amazing about the town. There's a strong Sudanese population here in Clarkston as well. And my mother felt so comfortable just being here. Instead of my father, we made lots of friends and lots of family as well through the different cultural traditions that we have. And a big part of that was talking in Arabic. And that's why I feel like it's so important that these ballots and these things and signage are in the language that we understand most. So when my family voted in the 2020 election, it was very hard for us. My father closely follows politics both here and back home in Sudan. But when he went to vote, it was hard. He has a visual impairment, so he could really read the text that was on the polling machine. And his unfamiliarity with the technology and the method of voting kind of made everything hard. And on top of that, he can understand the language. So I think it's very important that, you know, we have to put that first step forward and making sure that he can do the things that he wants to do freely. Because I had to help him and much to the alarm of a lot of the. um, freely, because I had to help him and much to the alarm of a lot of the poll workers that were working there. And I think that, you know, their job is to ensure there's fir- firm, fair elections. And how can fair elections be held without that language access? This isn't a question about voters being educated enough or armed enough. This is, is a question about making sure that citizens of Clarkston come into polling booths assure that they can exercise their constitutional rights to vote without fearing, without the fear of feeling inferior or feeling unsure about the decisions they're making that could very potentially affect the rest of their lives. Um, the ballot is one of the most powerful tools that we can yield as members of this country. And I think that, why would we not ensure that those tools fit perfectly with the individual that's using them? Why would we not do everything we can to make sure that they feel comfortable, excited in that rate? Why would we not? Um, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Calwee?
Ms., um, Shukar?
And you're on mute.
Oh, hello.
And his background, so.
Um, okay, I was also on my phone, which is why there was some background noises. Um, so my name is Soraya Sharker and I am the organizing director of Georgia Muslim Voter Project or GAMVP. We are a nonpartisan, uh, nonprofit organization. Um, our mission is to empower Muslim Americans to exercise their civic rights in, to the fullest extent possible. Through community-based voter engagement and grassroots organizing, our work emphasizes the strength of collective Muslim participation and its ability to improve our communities. Um, I'm here today to speak in favor of Councilwoman YT Bell's resolution to increase language access for voters who speak Arabic, Burmese and Somali. Just last Friday, GAMVP organized a community conversation, uh, uh, in partnership with, um, Masjid Al-Munine, the Masjid in Clarkston. From our conversations with the Muslim community in Clarkston, we learned that one of the biggest barriers to accessing one's civic rights is a language barrier. Um, I have seen this firsthand as a Muslim American, um, but as a daughter of an immigrant. Um, in twenty sixteen, um, I casted my first vote, um, as an eighteen-year-old and so did my mom. She was a naturalized citizen that year. Um, I remember going to the polling location with her and she was incredibly excited to vote. Um, she told me that this was like her official, like, chance of being an American in her first vote. Um, and I could see the excitement in her face, but once we went into the polling booth and we began voting, um, I could see how embarrassed and anxious she was feeling because I was there trying to translate for her. And to be honest, I'm not the best interpreter. Um, I was kind of messing up a lot and I was not really, um, explaining the nuances of what was on the ballot to her properly. Um, and I feel like all of this could have been avoided if this resolution had been introduced earlier, if we had more language access to the ballots. Um, my mom would have been, been able to easily read the ballot and interpret for herself. She would have been able to cast a more informed ballot instead of kind of just voting the way I was like guiding her to vote. Um, and, you know, a lot of our immigrant family members and our immigrant community members whose, uh, English is their second language, they're very intelligent, they're very aware of American politics, but they're not able to practice their civic rights. Um, by allowing for this expansion, this language expansion, we are ensuring that all community members in Clarkstons um, are able to practice their right to the vote. Thank you so much.
Ms. Abi? Thank you. I want to start by thanking YT Bell and the other members of the Clarkston City Council for giving us the opportunity to speak in support of this resolution. My name is Aisha Abid and I'm here with several of my colleagues from the Georgia Muslim Voter Project. We work all over Georgia, but DeKalb, DeKalb and Clarkston are two special areas of focus for us. Um, as Soraya mentioned, we recently held an event in collaboration with the Masjid Al-Munine over on Indian Creek right before the quick trip. Um, and it's a place where people from all over DeKalb come to attend prayer services. During the event, we talked to residents about being civically engaged and specifically how we could help them. And across the board, we heard language access, language access and language access. It was a top-three concern for everyone in attendance. Uh, we had several people there who attended who are citizens, who are registered voters, but English wasn't their first language. They wanted to hear from people representing them in a way that they could understand. We had native Burmese and Arabic speakers who understand the importance of voting, who even help people drive up to the polls and are on top of their eligible family and friends to go out and vote. And those same people are denied a fair and equal opportunity to engage. They aren't confident when they walk into a polling booth that they'll be able to vote for who they would like to. And they're not alone. We have data. The Pew Research, uh, Center shows that one out of ten voters in the country is an immigrant. We know that fifty-three percent of Clarkston residents are immigrants. And we know that a large percentage of these folks prefer a language other than English. We even have a case study over in Gwinnett, which has had expanded language access for Spanish speakers for years and is now expanding that access for even more Asian languages. We know that this type of inclusion increases turnout and is attractive for residents. According to the census, minority residents, um, in jurisdictions that were required to provide in-language ballots, the residency of minority is increased, um, because it reassures voters that the representatives actually care about them. So I hope that the city council members keep their constituents in mind and favorably, favorably consider the resolution to increase language equity in DeKalb and Clarkston.
Great job.
Ms. Kalanco?
Thank you so much. Um, greetings, everyone. I also have, um, dropped a line of, um, comment, um, on, in the chat. My name is Glory Kilanko. I'm the founder and CEO for Women Watch Africa. We provide multi-services to African refugees and immigrants from twenty-three African countries. Civic engagement is one of the major things that we do and, um, we are known for that in the city of Clarkston and the entire DeKalb County, where our services, um, speaks for itself. Women Watch Africa, um, provides citizenship preparation, legal services, voter education, voter registration. And as such, we are at all times, are struggling to make sure that we are explaining issues containing, uh...
We can't hear you, Ms. Kalanco.
Glory, Ms. Glory?
Yes.
We can't, we couldn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, I was saying that, um, Women Watch Africa at all times, we struggle to make sure that we're carrying our community along, uh, to making sure that they understand their rights to vote and what the issues are that are at stake. Particularly when SB two oh two was passed, it, it was very necessary for us to make sure that community members understand what the law states. And so we have spent so much money using community radio to reach out to community members to explain to them in five different languages, all of the three languages that is being proposed to...
We've lost you again. We lost you again.
Goodness. Um, we made sure that we're using five languages. The three that is being proposed in addition to Swahili and French were languages that we have been using to try to reach community members. So we are strongly in support of this proposal to make sure that language access is included in every aspect of information and also in signage, uh, during, um, voting. I was privileged to have a meeting with the mayor sometime last month to discuss the importance of, um, uh, uh, language access in everything that we do in the city because it was a huge gap during our conversation around redistricting. Trying to carry community members around to, for them to understand what redistricting meant was huge difficulty for us. So we had to begin to break all of these things down because some of the languages that are contained in all of the issue around voting, we do not have them in the vocabulary in our languages. So for us to be able to carry our members along, community members who contribute, uh, to the affairs that govern them in the city, I strongly support, uh, 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 this bill that is being proposed by Councilwoman, uh, YT Bell to say, let this be the first step that we take and then we can continue to move further to including other major languages that are spoken like Swahili and French. Thank you again.
Thank you. Ms. Calwee? Ms. Lynch?
Hi, thank you, Mayor Birx, and thank you, City Council. Um, it's a pleasure to be here. Uh, my name's Darlene Lynch and I am the co-chair of the Coalition of Refugee Service Agencies. And I'm here on their behalf. Um, many of you know, the Coalition of Refugee Service Agencies is made up of twenty different, uh, refugee and immigrant-serving organizations, um, all committed to making Georgia and Clarkston a more welcoming place and helping our new, uh, neighbors thrive in their communities. I'm here today to support, um, Councilwoman Bell's resolution to expand language access around voting. We know at CRS that nearly fifty percent of Georgia's refugees are citizens eligible to vote. Uh, and that the language can be a barrier to exercising that right. So I, I won't go on any longer. I just want to share CRS's support and offer our help in, um, making voting access and language access a reality for our communities. Thank you.
Ms. Calwee, does that conclude all participants? Okay, thank you all for your comments. We really appreciate that. We will end public comments and we will go to O Business, which is item A, approval of the cost estimates from the selected firm of Pond and Company for Splot Zero Nine Professional Engineering Services for the Mel Avenue Crossing Multi-Leg Intersection Safety and Operational Improvement Project. Ms. Calwee?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Um, the city of Clarkston requested proposals from qualified engineering design firms to provide engineering design, environmental and utility permitting, right-of-way plan, survey and construction, plan specifications, bid documents, manual and related traffic, safety and operational improvements at the Mel Avenue Six CSX Crossing and adjoining Church and East Constantion Multi-Leg Intersection. During the February first, twenty twenty-two regular city council meeting, management staff presented the respective firms of Pond and Company and Volkert Incorporated. The recommended firm to submit a cost fee for proposal was Pond and Company. That proposal, the anticipated, the, the proposal for the cost fee that was submitted by Pond and Company is approximately two point five million dollars. Design fees without federal funding would be approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Design fees with federal funding and G, and Georgia Department of Transportation permitting would be approximately three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to three hundred and fifty thousand. Um, Pond and Company costs, um, and fees were submitted at an estimate of nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, Madam Mayor, um, staff did recommend to have those fees submitted by Pond and Company. Um, at this time, staff did also recommend to proceed to the next step of the qualification-based selection process and request the firm of Volkert Incorporated to submit cost fees with their scope of work. Madam Mayor?
Okay, so can you go back over that last piece? Because I want to make sure we're clear as far as this item.
Well, we booked, in summary, uh, Mayor and Council, we submitted, staff did, um, a request for proposals for the design fees for the Mel Avenue Crossing Multi-Leg Project. We, two firms submitted their, um, scope of work for this project. The recommended firm out of Pond and Company and Volkert Incorporated was Pond and Company. Our next step was to present those firms to you with our recommendations. Again, we did recommend Pond and Company. And our next step was to come back to Mayor and City Council and present their cost estimate to you as the recommended firm. We've submitted that cost estimate to you as our next step. Their estimated cost of fees, nine hundred thousand dollars. And of course, we're submitting that for you for discussion, but staff is also putting in a recommendation that we do, um, obtain the cost estimate from Volkert Incorporated.
Okay, so for tonight, this is more for discussion purposes, not for a vote. Just so that we are aware of the fee of the, the cost estimate that came back from Pond and Company. And based on that information, you are now contacting the other vendor to get another estimate from them.
If that is Mayor and City Council's approval to do that, Madam Mayor, yes.
Okay, thank you. Council, at this time, do you have any discussion?
I don't see how it could hurt to get another quote from Volkert.
Okay, I, I agree with another vote.
Between the nine hundred and fifty thousand, so I don't see any reason not to proceed with getting this.
Okay, and I think Mr. Kaiser, you have your hand raised.
Yes, ma'am. Um, a little bit clarification, uh, with this. Um, the council does need to vote uh, for the Nile of Pond's design fee of nine hundred thousand dollars. And the recommendation, um, from staff, from Shawana and I, is that we move to the second-ranked firm because we are not able to negotiate a fee and scope with Pond under the Brooks Act. And so I, in accordance with that, uh, last time, we all tried to word something and get something straightened out and, and get it on record. So I went ahead and wrote down what, what I would recommend that the mayor and council state for the record, uh, for future use if we ever get audited. So here is the recommendation from, from staff. In accordance with...
Mr. Kaiser, we're gonna wait until we, because we did, in summary, have that recommendation. I think, um, Vice Mayor Yassu had a question first. So if they were going to discussion and if we decide to move forward with the second company, then we can hear that recommendation.
Okay, so if we need to, if we decide that we want to go forward with the second company, we need to deny
Yes.
Pond and Company. And then once we have all this discussion, we can move forward with this. Okay, so go ahead, Vice Mary Yassu.
I thank you, Madam Mayor. And I, I did have a feeling this is gonna come back to us, honestly. Um, I don't want to say I told you so, but, um, um, I'm not sure, uh, why if from the beginning, we did not even ask them for their cost before we even approved them. So, so now we have to go back to the same thing. So, um, I'm kind of confused. So did, didn't, uh, the other company, uh, present their fee as well when, when, uh, they were evaluated?
No, this was qualification-based selection. So based on your qualification.
Right.
But both of them were qualified enough?
If we move to the second phase of the process, then that was what the request for fees were associated with the process, based on Georgia Department of Transportation fee, um, process for, uh, request for proposals.
So, so I'm, I'm really kind of a little bit not sure. So if we approve the other company, what if the other company comes up and says another three million dollars? So are we gonna go back again? So this is to be going back and forth. I'm really confused, uh, why we don't get their, the exact uh, scope of work and also their fees before we even consider, um, approving any, uh, any, uh, organization or any company to do the work. Because we don't know yet how much they're gonna say. So then we're gonna go back again and say, oh, well, now this are also another, more expensive than the, the proposal. So shouldn't we ask both of them their cost before we approve any of them?
Okay, so, Mr. Kaiser?
So, uh, Councilman, here's how the process works under the Brooks Act, using federal funds. You solicit proposals from qualified engineering firms. You then take those firms that submitted proposals and you rank them one through fifty or one through ten or whatever number of proposals you have. We did the ranking, the technical ranking based upon the submitted proposal, no fee, no fee. Based upon that ranking from one to whatever, we go to the first-ranked, technically-ranked firm. We say you are ranked number one, Pond. We say you are ranked number one, Pond. Submit us a fee proposal. They submit a fee proposal. We look at the scope of work and the fee proposal. And if we can't negotiate that fee and scope that they submitted, because there's negotiations that take place, there's a man-hours and scope of work, there's a bunch that goes into negotiations with an engineering firm. We were not even close to be able to negotiate with Pond. They were two and a half times higher than my engineering estimate. And I'm never that wrong. So we said, here are the numbers. Here's where we need to be, within this range. They weren't even close. So now what happens under the Brooks Act is we go to the second-ranked firm, technically-ranked firm, which is Volker Incorporated. We say, Volker, submit us a fee. They submit a fee. If council decides to have them submit a fee, and then they submit a fee to us, we will evaluate the same method, the same way. And if we can't negotiate a fee and scope with them, then we have to start over, because only two firms submitted a technical proposal to us. So we are now in the phase of council making decision as to whether we move on to the second-ranked firm. If council chooses not to move on to the second-ranked firm, then we can always throw the proposals out and start all over again, re-advertise the project.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. And I see Councilwoman Hopkins and then Councilwoman Bell.
I'm going to just take my hand down. I had a question about why we couldn't negotiate with them, but I'm just kind of reviewing the Brooks Act as we're talking, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Bell?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Kaiser, for that explanation. But due to the ranking system and how it's set up and eligibility, I think we should move forward with getting the Volker Incorporated to submit a proposal with their fees and hopefully we'll be able to negotiate with them. If not, we'll have to start the process over again.
Okay, Councilwoman Bell, I mean, Councilwoman Hood.
Yes, question from Mr. Kaiser. Are the bids, have the bids been presented in a sealed format? So that the subsequent bidders, or in this case, one bidder, is not able to use information we're discussing tonight to work with their bid?
Yes, ma'am. So here's how it works under the Brooks Act. Some governments state to every vendor, every design firm that submits a proposal, a fairly funded project. Some governments say, submit a sealed technical proposal and a sealed cost proposal. We will only open the technical proposal if you are ranked number one. If not ranked number two, then we have another fee proposal sitting there to go rank the second firm. We chose, and I've been practicing forever, and that is, why have the engineering firms go through all the time on preparing a fee proposal when they may not even be selected as number one firm? So neither firm submitted a fee proposal when they submitted the technical proposal. When we ranked Pond as number one, then we said Pond, within a week, sent us a fee proposal. Do the same thing with Volker if the council chooses to do that.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, so they would be privy to the information?
No, unless they do an open records request. And I've never had that with an engineering firm in my entire thirty-year career.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Now, Councilwoman Hopkins, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. I was just reviewing the steps of the Brooks Act. And it's, you know, final step is negotiation with the top-ranked firm, which I think was Pond, based on the qualifications-based selection. So, and you said, just like, automatically, we cannot negotiate with them.
Not even close.
Question is, why not?
They are so far off in terms of fees, it's not even negotiable. So I responded back to them and stated, here is what the fee should be in this range. I gave them a range that the fee should be in, based upon my thirty years of knowledge of doing this. And they said, now, it should be this number. And I said, explain to me why. So we went back and forth, Councilwoman Hopkins, on a number of emails. Their scope was not the scope that we need to have for this project. So we debated back and forth. Then I explained to them and gave them some examples of similar projects on a similar type of involvement with CSX with G dot requirements. And I said, here is what the fee should be. It's what we talked about. And they say, well, they basically said, we can't work within that fee range. And they gave a number of reasons. One was workload, which is one of the reasons a lot of firms, contractors and engineers give when they don't really want to do a project. Another reason was that we don't believe that G dot will provide an expeditious response to our plans. We had to put some additional cost for that. And I said, I understand all that. I get what you're saying, Pond. But you don't need to have a fee that's two and a half times what it should be. So the fee, I'm not going to say what the fee is, because who knows who's on this call today? But the fee was a little over twice what it should be, design fee. And that's not reasonable, not reasonable at all.
So, I mean, you told us what the fee or the cost would be for the whole project. So you're saying the design fee itself is what is beyond reason?
Yes, we're not, Ms. Kwai mentioned other numbers. Those are numbers for my estimates for construction. What you do is, as an engineer, you look at what the fee should be based upon a scope of work. And then you look at what the construction cost might be with a twenty, twenty-five percent, give or take, plus or minus. And then you base a percentage of what the construction cost is on the fee. So when I looked at the entire ball of wax, I basically said, this is about a two and a half million dollar construction project. Fees should be in the range of twelve to sixteen percent, based upon me doing this several times a year for the past thirty years. And so I know what the range should be. They were over twenty percent fee of construction. Actually, they were nine hundred thousand. They were close to thirty percent design fees of what the construction cost is. Thirty percent. That's not even close. They should be in the range of twelve to sixteen percent of construction cost. So that is, so they're way off, the Councilwoman.
Their design fee was.
Way off.
Unreasonable.
Unreasonable, yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So I think at this time, we talked, so now we can actually do a motion for this particular item. And given what we've heard so far, if you would like to pursue the second-ranked vendor, then let us go ahead and make that motion. And so, Mr. Kaiser, you have the verbiage, and I think the council has it in their packet to see what needs to be said, but we can just go ahead one more time and make sure we're clear on this.
Actually, this may be a little bit different. I don't think the city manager has this. And so I may have to give it to her after this meeting, or maybe it's recorded, or somebody can write this down, or I can send an email of this. But what the council should say in terms of a, of moving forward is that, is that in accordance with the Brooks Act, the evaluation committee was unable to negotiate a fee and scope with Pond and Company. And the committee recommends the city council and mayor that we should move forward with negotiations of fee and scope with the second-ranked technical firm, which is Volker Incorporated.
Okay, and so make sure next time that you give City Manager Cowie that information, so we can make sure we all on the same page. Can we make sure of that? Okay, thank you. So, yes, Vice Mayor Yassu, and thank you, Mr. Kaiser.
I'll make a motion, I guess.
Okay, go for it.
All right, a move that in accordance to Brooks Act that fee negotiation was not attained, so we denied the Pond and Company agreement. And instead, we moved to request from the next second-selected firm, Volker Incorporated, to submit cost and fees and scope of work.
I second, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All right, it's been properly moved in second, that in accordance with the Brooks Act, that what you said.
Be on mute. Be on mute.
I was going to. I had it, boy. Okay. So, it's been properly moved in second, that in accordance with the Brooks Act, that the, and Vice Mayor Yassu, you said something a little bit different. So make sure, let me have you say it one more time. I just want to make sure I got it right.
In accordance to Brooks Act, the fee negotiation was not attained. Hence, we denied the contract with Pond and Company. And instead, we moved to select with the second qualified firm, Volker Incorporated, to submit cost and fees and scope of work.
Okay, and that was properly seconded. So in accordance with the Brooke Act, that we were unable to, with the, unable to obtain. All right, that's what happens. Fees, yes, fees, that's right. And so we would deny the contract with Pond and Company, and instead, we will move to step two to select the second qualified firm, Volker, and to have them to submit cost and fee estimates for the scope of work. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? All right, motion passed. Thank you, and thank you. So we'll move to consent agenda. Now, consent agenda is when the council has met during our work session and we've agreed on these items and do not require additional deliberation by the council. So with that being said, at this time, what we will do is make sure that we vote to approve these items at one time, so we don't have to go through the process of making motions for each one. So I wanted to make sure to clarify that for some people who may be new to our council meetings and wondering why we have this area. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. And the consent agenda items are Item A, Approval of a Resolution for SLOSS 08 Market Street Resurfacing and Sidewalks. Project Change Order Number Two. Item B, Approval to Refer the Housing First Initiative to the Community Development and Civic Innovation Committee. And Item C, which is to approval, the approval of a resolution to adopt the approved Clarkston Comprehensive Plan Update. And actually, that one should have been, that shouldn't have been there. I thought we were going to have that to be an item. Did you need the motion for that, Ms. Cowie?
You need to adopt it. It needed to be approved and adopted. And you, I think the consented in the previous agenda item was to adopt, to discuss adoption. So you said yes, that you were going to adopt it. So yes, you're in the correct.
Okay, okay, so we're fine. Okay. So at this time.
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Can we add an item to the consent agenda before we adopt it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess.
Okay, because I thought that we had already, I don't know, I thought we put YT Bell's resolution to encourage the Cab County Commissioners to provide additional translation to the voting information on the consent agenda. I may have been wrong, though. But if not, I would like to add it. I would like to add it if we didn't.
Okay, I think what happened is, yeah, that's fine. So if we want to do that, we can add that at this time. Is that okay, Councilwoman Bell?
Totally fine with me.
All right, perfect. So now, let's go back and change. So now we added Item D, which is to approve the, of a resolution to encourage the Cab County Commissioner to provide additional translation for voting information and materials. So we have four items in the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve those four items.
I make a motion. So I move to approve the consent agenda, which will consist of four items, the approval of the resolution for SLOSS 08 Market Street Resurfacing and Sidewalk Project, Change Order Number Two. B, Approval to Refer the Housing First Initiative to the Community Development and Civic Innovation Committee. C, Approval, oh, wait, you want me to read all of them? Or no?
Well, you're on the roll, so go ahead.
Okay, and C, Approval of a resolution to adopt on the approved Clarkston Comprehensive Plan Update and additional added item, the approval of a resolution to encourage the Cab County Commissioners, such as the Board of Voter Registration, to provide additional translation for voting information and materials.
Thank you. Okay, it's been properly moved in second, that we approve the consent agenda with the four stated items. Is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
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 Councilwoman Care, I want to hear that.
I said aye.
Okay, great. A motion passed. I wanted to make sure, because it has to be everybody's consent. Okay, thank you all. So now, you heard that? So we got this, all these wonderful things resolved. So we just have a few things, okay? And then you may be able to hear the State of the Union. We're doing pretty good with this, okay? Outstanding. So the next is new business. And we have Item A, which is the Approval of a Resolution for SLOSS 04B and C Pedestrian Enhancement Trailhead and Roland Street Project, Change Order Forty-One. Ms. Cowie?
Madam Mayor, we had discussed this agenda item at our work session, and there was a correction made to it. It was to approve a resolution to change, for change order forty-one for the SLOSS 04B and C Pedestrian Enhancement Trailhead and Roland Street Project to repair the trench above the waterline in the amount of twenty thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So the correction on this agenda item, again, the contractor detected an unmarked two-inch waterline on Roland Street. And due to the removal of an overburdened pavement and soil of the pipeline that was eighty years old, the line began to leak with unsuccessful attempts to repair. So, City of Clarkston will be repairing the trench above the waterline. And that's it, Madam Mayor. The correction has been made, and we are back to you.
All right, so let's make sure we go ahead and move forward with this, and we'll entertain a motion. And with that motion, then we can turn around and have a discussion, and we can vote on it. Is that good with everyone? Outstanding. So I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I would like to make the motion that we approve a resolution for SLOSS 04B and C Pedestrian Enhancement Trailhead and Roland Street Project Change Order Number Forty-One.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, that we approve a resolution for SLOSS 04B and C Pedestrian Enhancement Trailhead and Roland Street Project Change Order Number Forty-One. Is there any additional discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passed. Okay, and now we have the, to approve a hundred thousand of ARPA funds to provide supplemental financial aid with provisions to residents tested positive for COVID- nineteen by a medical test provider. Vice Mayor Yassu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we did discuss this thoroughly at the council work session. And I've had further discussions with individual council members in the last few more days, in the last few days. And from, since our discussion the last time.
Um, and, um, from, since, um, our discussion the last time, I had prepared the resolution, and, um, it's, uh, on the agenda. I've included, um, um, most of the concerns that were raised, uh, including the in- limit for individual, uh, beneficiaries, um, and also the criteria for, um, what are going to be required to meet, uh, in order to qualify for such aid. Um, and, um, uh, I feel like, um, this is really, uh, ready. I mean, can go ahead and, uh, approve it. And there has been, uh, from my conversation, there is still, um, some interest for further discussion on this agenda item. Um, but I'm really willing to listen more if there are any, uh, or if there are any questions. I definitely am also willing to answer them if there are any unanswered questions from the last meeting. Um, the, the main thing that, um, was, uh, the big change from the last time is, um, addition of, um, um, beneficiaries, uh, to include, um, dependents, um, of, uh, people, um, who lose work, I mean, work hours or lose income because their, their, uh, child got, um, COVID. Um, and, uh, because of that, if they lose, um, some hours during the five days, um, isolation time of their child, they would qualify as well, or any dependent within the family. Um, and the, the limit is going to be twelve hundred per household family, and it's going to be six hundred dollar per occ- occurrence, uh, within six months, uh, period. Um, I think this were the main things, uh, parts of the, the resolution, I, uh, it's in, uh, in front of us. And, um, um, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. And just like we did the previous item, I will entertain a motion for this, and then we can proceed with any additional deliberation, and then the vote.
Did we approve the resolution to provide supplemental financial aid to residents who test positive for COVID-19, and whose employer does not cover the loss of wages for five days isolation slash quarantine time?
I second that.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second that we approve funding for, uh, the, can you say the motion again? I'm sorry, I had it, I had it.
Sure. Do we approve the resolution for supplemental financial aid to residents who test positive for COVID-19 by medical test provider, and his employer does not cover the loss of wages for five days isolation slash quarantine time?
Okay, thank you. So, it's been properly moved in second that we approve funding for, uh, I'm not, I'm, I see it, but I hear it.
I think we all know what we're talking about now. We can probably, we can probably go ahead and discuss it.
Yes, let's discuss it. Let's discuss it. Any more discussion?
Um, Madam Mayor?
So, yes, yes, Councilwoman Hopkins.
Um, I know there has been some discussion, debate back and forth, whether we should vote on this now, or should we wait until the retreat?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm, I'm kind of actually on both sides of this. I think this is vital legislation. I think the sooner we get it in place, and people can quarantine when they should quarantine, the safer everybody in Clarkston will be. At the same time, I also see the need to get, uh, our whole COVID-19 package, like, in one unified thing that we need to discuss at the retreat of what is going to be allocated, how much. And I know between now and we're talking about, um, ten days from now, but anything we come to on the retreat is not going to be voted on until April, or till the next meeting. So, I'm wondering if we could just, like, drink, bring the dollar amount down, because I honestly don't think there's going to be a huge number of people that we're going to use a hundred thousand dollars here in the next month. If we would, like, bring it to fifty thousand dollars, just to cover us through March until people's meeting, and then we can, like, really decide how we want to allocate all of our COVID funding.
Okay, so we, we do have the motion on the floor, so for anything, like, what you're saying, the motion would have-
Would be a motion to amend.
You can amend the motion.
Uh, can I just say something?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And, and I definitely, uh, thought of that, Councilmember Hopkins, and I appreciate you, um, considering passing it now. And the thing is, um, I like, like you said, we don't vote anything on the, at the retreat. So, um, gonna delay more further until, um, until next month. And, um, honestly, the amount, a hundred thousand dollars, is only going to be able to help a hundred and sixty-six individuals if every person only gets six hundred dollars. Um, and if we, so this is between a hundred to a hundred and fifty, uh, families, basically. So, um, I, I'm really not sure, um, if, huh, because if we reduce it, the amount, and we're gonna have to go back and, uh, add more to it, I guess, in the future, I guess. But instead, we could, um, if you, I think it would be better to, uh, to say we spent fifty thousand, up to fifty thousand, and then that mu- uh, not, the number could go up to a hundred thousand. Or, I'm not sure, I just don't want us to go back and visit it again. And instead, we just could pass it now, and, um, uh, I mean, we never use all the money. I mean, but we don't really necessarily have to reduce the amount right now. Because we don't know how much the need is.
Retray, motion to amend, I, I agree with-
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes, uh, Councilwoman Johnson.
Well, I, the motion need to be amended anyway to reflect the dependence, because it's not on there.
It is on there, ma'am.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear him say it, I'm sorry. He didn't say it. Jamie didn't say it.
It is in the resolution, I mean, if you want us to-
No, it's fine. No, I didn't, I didn't see it.
They didn't say the dependence when I said it, uh, that was, but that was what I was referring to.
Okay, good deal.
Uh, 'cause I'm seeing something. Where, where, where specifically, Council, Vice Mayor Yasu, does it state that it covers the dependence? I just want to make sure, because we had some chatter in the comment section about that, and I just want to make sure.
So, it, it says, um, be, I mean, from saying, after you say be it further resolved by the city council, which is the, um, that, hold on, the, okay, now therefore, uh, whereas, okay, I'll just read this, the more, the part that includes it. Whereas, some employers do not provide their employees with paid leave of absence to fulfill the quarantine requirements for the employees or their dependents. Now therefore be resolved by the city council, um, that, that to the residents whose employees do not provide such paid leave of absence, you know, to facilitate the, by, you know, so, by, okay. So, hold on.
This one, because I want to make sure.
So, I mean, uh,
So it doesn't say it?
It does. It does. It says, employee or their dependents.
But in the, in the, it states it, but if, in terms of the action, I guess, I guess that's the p-
Right, I think the action-
Yeah.
Action says, action part just says six hundred per occurrence or twelve hundred per household family. So does that mean that the twelve hundred per household family counts for? If you have dependents, that, that's what you can get?
Six hundred is within six months of, within six months per occurrence. So if it happens for a child, it's still going to be, he's a depe- a dependent of the person. So the person who's claiming will have to prove that he lost because of his dependent. I'm not sure what, I mean.
I think, um, Ms. Cowie-
Yes, I'm, 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 I'm gonna just read the whereas again, where some employers do not provide their employees with paid leave of absence to fulfill the quarantine requirements for the employees or their dependents. I'm trying to get, you know, make sure that that is clarification, that if they needed to take off from work and submit a sick leave, which is one of the requirements for submitting, that they don't have sick leave, so they have to take off work to take care of a, a child or dependent that has tested positive for COVID. So I, it doesn't specifically say dependent in the functioning of the money, but my understanding is, uh, for the employee to take off work to take care of a, uh, a, uh, dependent. Well, maybe Stephen can clarify, since we all reviewed the resolution, um, together.
Yes. Mr. Quinn? Mr. Quinn?
I was stuck on mute there. Um, i- it's not as clear as it could be, um, as far as the, um, I mean, it's mentioned in the recitals, but we can just add that sentence to it. Um, y- you know, if, I think it's been made pretty clear during the discussion, that that's part of what's on the table here. And, uh, I can just add a, a clause to the resolution to reflect that before it's signed.
Okay, so, so what is the clause that we, we're adding?
Okay, hold on. Proof of verifiable loss of income due to COVID-19 quarantine for the resident or their dependents, um, caring for them.
Well, I mean, the dependent wouldn't need to lose income.
Right.
Oh.
It's a child.
Right, well, verifiable loss of income due to COVID-19 quarantine.
I think you'd want to say due to a positive test from the employee, or due to a positive test from a dependent, that the employee has to stay home from work to care for. Right?
I think that could be solved if we, uh, can add a clause at the end, we say with the proof of verifiable loss of income due to COVID-19 quarantine to the, to the employee or his family member.
That's what I just-
I think we're all saying the same thing, so.
Yeah.
Let me withdraw my motion.
Okay, yes, Ms. Cowie?
Oh, I'm fine. I was just gonna say that if that's the case, then the third whereas would fulfill the quarantine requirements for the employees or their dependents.
Okay.
The third whereas- Yeah, I think we just add to, we, if we add to be under the last be it further resolved, proof of verifiable loss of income due to COVID-19 quarantine by the individual or in support of a dependent.
Yep, that's got it.
Okay.
In support of a dependent, or. Hmm, for.
I'm, I'm gonna make a new motion.
You gonna, you gonna, are you gonna, because you got a motion out there, so you're gonna-
Yeah, I'm gonna withdraw.
Motion.
I rescind my motion.
You gonna rescind your motion, okay. Alright, so the motion's been rescinded.
I move that we approve the resolution to provide supplemental financial aid to residents who test positive for COVID-19 by medical test providers, and his employer does not cover the loss of wages for five days isolation in the form proposed agenda packet, with the exception that under item B, in the last be it further resolved, shall be proof of verifiable loss of income due to COVID-19 quarantine of the employee or one of the employee's dependents.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. Is there any more discussion? I see, uh, Councilwoman Hood's hand raised.
Yes, um, I support totally this initiative. Um, item B, proof of verifiable loss of income. Uh, are we quantifying or defining that in any way? Uh, I, I know that, that might be difficult. Uh, and it is related to quarantine, not just if you have COVID, but, but again, part of this, I understand, part of this effort is to incur, to quarantine when their employer is not paying sick leave, but, um, I'm just wondering if that requires any any effort at definition, or any way to quantify that.
Okay.
Um.
Well, wait, wait, wait a minute, I want to make sure, because Vice Mayor Yasu, I'm gonna, because we talked about this, I want to make sure everybody has a chance to talk. And then, if, if you, after that, then we'll let you talk on it. So does anybody else have any questions?
I just wanted to get some-
I do.
So let, Councilwoman Hopkins, and then Councilwoman Johnson.
Um, getting some clar- clarification on Councilwoman Hood's, uh, question. Um, how it would be quantified, the, how the loss of income would be quantified, is that what you're?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, I think from all of our discussion last week, um, we did sort of illustrate this is going to be very difficult, if impossible, to quantify for, like, gig workers or people who aren't working for an hourly salary, because if, obviously, they can't put in for sick pay, if they get sick pay, they don't qualify, so they would have to evidence with multiple paychecks and with a gap in it. And there's just not a way to do that for, for gig workers. So that's one of those holes in this, that we would have to try to find a way to cover, I think, in our retreat, right? Like, that was one of the, sort of, maybe expansions that we could go into. This, this clearly isn't going to cover everybody.
Hmm, and then Councilwoman Johnson?
That was my question, Madam Mayor. How to verify a forty-hour worker from a sixteen-hour worker? And I think, um, I basically figured it out. We will have to compare previous paystubs.
Councilwoman Carol, then I'm gonna let you go, Vice Mayor Yasu, because I want to make sure everybody has a chance, and you write all this stuff down. And we'll, we'll be ready for it.
I think we're basically, this is basically the same calculation we're asking the staff to perform when it comes to rent relief or utility assistance.
We can barely hear you. Come closer.
This is basically the same calculation. We're asking the staff to perform when it comes to rent relief or utility assistance. So I don't see why we couldn't just leave this calculation to the staff the same way. We haven't tried to micromanage the calculations for rent relief or utility assistance.
Well, and, okay, to that point, we'll let you do that. Ms. Cowie, is it the same? Because I want to make sure before we make that assumption, you're here, you can tell us.
For the previous applications, the threshold was a maximum of three thousand dollars. We're just gonna use rental assistance as the, as, as an example. This, uh, threshold is a minimum wage of fifteen dollars per hour, um, that we will use to calculate the submission of the loss of wages from a, a potential applicant.
Okay, okay, alright, and-
Well, Madam Mayor, if I may, my question wasn't on that basis. Mine was the verifying part. Um, if I say I work forty hours, and I have a pay stub for twenty-four hours, but I was already downgraded to part-time, we don't have no way of verifying that, you know what I'm saying? Without additional contact with an employer, which doesn't make sense, or is inconveniencing the resident. So that's what I was afraid of, is what are we gonna do not to inconvenience the resident to verify that, yes, this is a forty-hour a week employee who only worked sixteen hours that week? That's all out of things.
Vice Mayor Yasu, talk on this point, and then I see Councilwoman Carol and Councilwoman Hood.
Thank you. I think, uh, I, I, I definitely agree with, uh, Councilmember Carol, what he said. This is not different. What, that's the reason I changed the word in-
This is not different, what, that's the reason I changed the word, instead of using wage, income covers everybody, so, and I let the, our city staff have the flexibility on determining this, just like they do with rental assistance. With rental assistance, there were, uh, people who were cab drivers who were getting rental assistance. Nobody was asking them if they were working how many hours before that, nobody was asking people who were getting utility assistance, if they were part-time or not, so let's leave that to our city staff's judgment, but it's going to be up to the individual applicant to demonstrate that he lost income because of four, five days, we're talking about five days of, um, loss of income for five days, and regardless of, uh, how much he was getting paid, or whether he was paid full-time or part-time, we're going to use our minimum wage threshold to calculate it for forty hours. And five days comes to forty hours, that's where I got the six hundred dollars for, from. So everybody will get six hundred dollars, regardless if you were getting minimum pay, wage, or if you were getting paid more than that. So this is an assistance, and I think the threshold would help, would serve everybody, and, um, uh, but I think the verifying is, I understand it could be hard for some people, but there is always a way of verifying, just like we're doing it for other benefits. I leave that up to Ms., uh, the city manager and the staff to determine that if somebody have a legitimate loss of, loss of income. So this will include, this definitely will cover gig workers, however, it's going to be, the burden's going to be up to the applicant to demonstrate that they did lose income during that time, which was the five days, uh, whether it is for them or for their child or for their dependent. Um, so I think, um, when we say loss of income, I feel like it, 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 it includes, uh, gig workers, it also includes employees. This is primarily going to help a lot of employees easily, because they can demonstrate that they lost their income by comparing their pay stub very easily, and we could see there, if we could ask them their bank statement or something, I think there is a way we can do that. So I'm really, uh, I'm really feel like I think we could really help a lot of folks, um, with this. I know it's not going to cover a lot of people who get paid at the high end, but it will help them a little bit, and they don't have to feel the pressure to go to work instead of supporting their dependent, or instead of, uh, worrying about paying their bills, or hiding that they were sick, or instead of trying to conceal it and go to work. But I, I, I feel like, um, the loss of income is going to be up to, it's going to be a burden of the applicant to prove that they did lose an income because of five days, and we're talking only about five days. Beyond five days is something that we, we could help them with other programs, but that, this program is going to be only for the five day isolation period. And, uh, there was a concern with the online application, I had a conversation where, via email, with our city manager, and, um, uh, we are already accepting business licenses online, uh, there's no reason why people cannot apply online, but we just going to make sure that, you know, based on their data, that, that we don't endanger our staff as well, so, that, I mean, we want to make sure that people are not going to apply right away, and they can't apply right away, because first, they're going to have to find a proof that they lost income, and that will take time, uh, the, at least about two weeks before they could apply, so, um, I think that will cover it, but in the meantime, we also would like to, to get this, uh, hopefully it passes, that it also available, make it available online, so that people can apply online, just like they're applying their business licenses.
Okay, Councilwoman Carol and Councilwoman Hood.
I, I don't have anything I throw in my hand.
Okay, Councilwoman Hood.
Uh, yes, so, I'm sorry to belabor these points, but if one, um, has a home business, um, would this then not apply to them because they can quarantine in their home, uh, uh, and that would not be any change in their circumstance?
That's good point. Vice Mayor?
Uh, all right, well, um, I'm not exactly sure, um, if somebody have a home business, um, I mean, if he is going to quarantine for five days, that means he's not gonna, uh, do, if he have a meeting, in-person meeting or anything with his client, or I don't know if he have anything, but we really can't really say, uh, think, maybe there is going to be one case or two cases that will come like that, and I would really leave it to our city manager's decision, uh, and discretion on when it comes to unique cases like this, but I'm not exactly sure if somebody who have a home business will apply, or I really don't know if, um, he would qualify, uh, based on this, but if he lost his income, and if he can demonstrate that he lost his income during that time, I think he should be able to get some help. That's just my, my belief.
And I, and I totally agree that we can't, you know, come up with every possibility of a permutation of this, and I, uh, I agree that putting the burden on the applicant to show that they did have a bona fide loss of, uh, income, uh, and I, I'm glad you changed the term from wage to income, because I, I think that makes it broader, uh, so thank you for addressing that.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Bell and then Councilwoman Hopkins.
I'll be brief, I think that the, and, uh, Vice Mayor Yassim let me know if I'm speaking out of turn, but I think the, the problem that you're trying to address here is to provide that supplemental, uh, financial support for individuals that contract COVID and they don't receive any paid leave of absence, um, to, uh, Councilmember Hood's, uh, question, I think is valid, a lot of people work from home, but, you know, some people catch COVID and they can't function or work, and some people choose to, and I think those are stipulations that they can advise, but if they choose not to work, then they, there we still assisting now with supplemental financial support during that timeframe, uh, if their employer does not provide them with paid leave. Is that clear, uh, Vice Mayor?
Yes, so we are, I honestly, um, what I see is number one, that they have to get, uh, COVID, number two, that they have to lose income. So if they work from home, or if they work at work, I mean, there are a lot of people who do both, so I really feel we're going to be, uh, in a tough situation trying to help folks, if we're gonna try to ask them, do you work from home, or do you, so the point is, we, even if they work from home, uh, we want to make sure that they stay home, so that they don't have to try to go outside or have a meeting or anything like that, so during that time, and we can't, honestly, we can't enforce this, but we want to incentivize, and this is what we're trying to do, and at the end of the day, it's going to be really up to individuals, and this is one way we could, uh, make sure people don't go to work, um, and don't interact with other people, or they could have enough time to take care of their dependents and not worry about going to work, but as long as their employer or, or their client agrees with them, this is not, uh, we cannot enforce that either, so, um, this is primarily anybody who contracts COVID and he want, I, I, he want to be, uh, quarantining for five days, and his employer does not give him any benefit like that, so that we don't want him to feel the pressure of going back to work and, um, dealing with clients or anything like that, just because they're afraid that they're going to lose an income. So we want them to know that the city is going to be there to support them and help them a little bit, so that they don't have to worry about the five days, um, while they are quarantining, they don't have to worry about income, so at least they will be able to pay some of their bills, and, um, they don't have the pressure when it comes to financially to go to work. So I, I think this is just, uh, small help, six hundred dollars is definitely not going to make lives better, but at least it will ease their burden and it will reduce the pressure of people from wanting to go to work, um, just to pay their bills or anything like that, so, um, this will cover anybody who can demonstrate they lost their income and who tested positive using a PCR test. So, I mean, yeah.
Councilwoman, uh, Hopkins?
Yeah, I would just like to say that, Pete, if a person contracts COVID, they're still eligible for the rental assistance, the mortgage assistance, utility assistance? No?
Well, we start with the rental assistance.
Okay, that's.
Correct. Yeah, we have funding available any for, for rental assistance, we have mortgage assistance and utility.
Okay, so we do have other benefits available, but the intention of this piece was specifically to encourage people to quarantine really more as a public health issue than for that individual, because they've got it and have presumably an option of working or not working, so I would assume asymptomatic, and the recommended thing is to stay home, recommended is not for their own health, but for everybody's health, so we are just trying to encourage that. So regarding the person that works from home, um, if they can continue working from home and not, you know, lose income, then they're not in that demographic. If they sort of naturally quarantine by nature, because their job doesn't involve seeing the public, then they're not in that target group. That's why I said this particular piece of the puzzle is not for everybody, hopefully we can get together and put together our comprehensive package, but, um, you know, with, with all of the little pieces to hit all of the things that we want to hit, but this is just one small piece, I think, as a public health issue, to encourage people to quarantine that might otherwise be tempted to go to work, and, and that's the target.
Okay, good. Now, the, one of the things I wanted to ask Ms. Cowie, uh, City Manager Cowie, was if they get the twelve hundred, is that taxable?
Um, combination, um, six hundred dollars is not, Madam Mayor, that's my understanding, um, for ten ninety-nine, um, but if you've gotten that additional, um, because our, our board, um, receives a planning, our planning and zoning board receives six hundred dollars for their participation on our board, and that is the maximum for ten ninety-nine.
Okay, but if they, because the household could get twelve hundred, is that correct? So if, if someone was out of work because of a child, and then they were out of work because of themselves or whatever, that's twelve hundred, so that's taxable, is that not correct?
I'm assuming that that is. I will, um, look with that with our finance, uh, um, finance director, I'll make sure we, we look at those precautions, um, first, but I know that the six dollar maximum, um, before you can be ten ninety-nine.
Okay, because I only bring that up, because if we're doing that, that's something in terms of documenting to any applicant, to let them know that there's a chance by doing it twice, because we don't know how many people, but just from a documentation perspective, to make sure that it's very clear, so when it comes time for them to do taxes, it's not something that they're surprised about. That's, that's one of my concerns, is to make sure that we do that. And then secondly, are we, are we agreeing or saying that if someone is getting this assistance, that they can continue to get all the other assistance as well, and that's not an issue? I just want to make sure we all on the same page, in terms of if someone is getting this financial assistance, they can get utility assistance or something else? Is that, okay.
I don't see why we would change that.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's clear, so, so we said it in public, and it's open.
They should be eligible for all of the assistance that we can provide.
All of the above, I just wanted to have it out public, so we can hear, okay, perfect.
That's the application, um, process as well.
Thank you, that's why I wanted to make sure you were clear. So, Councilwoman Hood.
You're muted.
You're muted, you are saying some wonderful stuff there.
There, couldn't get the click. Uh, do we need to, um, identify that in this, that this would not preclude them from applying for other, uh, things, this can be on the application?
Yeah, we can, we can sta, we can allow staff to take care of that, but I just wanted to make sure as we're having this discussion, that is clear in terms of the opportunities for us to continue to support our community, that it's, you know, someone doesn't feel like, if I do this, I can't do this, or whatever else, so I just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we've had a lot of discussion, y'all ready for the question? Okay, outstanding. So with that, we have, um, with the amendment to item B to reproof of variable loss of income due to COVID-19 quarantine of the employee or of the employees and dependents, so that was the motion.
I'm just saying dependent, you said independent.
Oh, dependents, yes.
Independent, yeah.
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passed. All right, so now, we have gone through the executive set, and we've gone through all of this, so if you are just that curious to see how long it's going to take for us to do executive session, you don't have to stay here, okay? But at this point, we're going to an executive session, and we're gonna close out the Zoom, and then when we're in executive session, we're going to talk, and then we're going to come back and close out the meeting. So unless you just are just a curious type, you can go ahead and go, because we've taken care of all the business, so thank you so much for your time, and so right now, I will entertain a motion for us to go into executive session. Vice Mayor Yassim?
I move that we go to executive session to discuss personnel matters.
Is there a second?
Seven.
Second. All, all, it's been properly moved, seconded, that we go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion passed, and we will see you when we adjourn. Close, most, okay. So maybe we should do it one more time, just for the record sake.
One more time.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passed, meeting adjourned, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Take care.
Good night.
Good night.